All right, good morning, everybody. It is April 18th. We are here for our regular county commissioner meeting, second meeting of April. It is 11:02, getting started here. We... You, the agenda is pulled up also. Did you attempt to?
I did not, but I will.
Oh, copy and paste?
Yes.
Please?
Just share this screen?
Share the screen, yeah.
Yep, we'll do that.
We'll do.
All right. If everybody will please turn off your cell phones and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We're going to have silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. We have approval of the agenda. We will be waiting for staff personnel to come chat with us on the first four items. So we were just discussing... Tape or holding those places until they get here, but we can move through the rest of the agenda. Were there any other changes or additions that we have? Oh, I would like to say we did not, we failed to get a few things on the agenda. So we'll have a special meeting tomorrow for those three items. And do we have a signed service agreement for the one item on tomorrow?
Has Burris signed the... Oh, she has, okay. I just didn't have that. Okay, great, yeah. So it's on, she signed off and it's ready for y'all.
Excellent, okay. Thank you.
Yeah. We have that tomorrow. And then what else do we have?
The cost allocation plan.
Cost allocation plan.
And then I put an update on there for, just so we can discuss. We'll see what happens tonight at City Council with the E-911 authority. So we can, the board just has an update and if you can keep me bringing them up.
Great, okay. Great, so we'll do those three items tomorrow. And with that, can I get an approval or a consideration motion for the agenda?
To prove that we approve the agenda for today's meeting.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion?
No, thank you.
All right. Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. We'll move on to community informational items. Commissioner Fiedler?
None for me.
Okay, Commissioner Marcela?
Yeah, just a couple of things. We were unsuccessful in our capital grant for the purchase of a vehicle for our local transit system. So we're in the process of reorganizing our MMLOF funding, our multimodal auction funding, to include a capital purchase with that money, which is an allowable expense. So Tim and I have met with our CDOT representative and will narrow down that final allocation this week and then get that to CDOT so that we can start the process of drawing down that funding for implementation. So there's that piece. Tomorrow, I'll meet with the nonprofit leaders, Full Circle and C4, to start work with Hunger Free Colorado and that contracting between our local human services department and SNAP piece or work on the contracts that Hunger Free Colorado has with the Colorado Department of Human Services. Lake County is included in their master plan. And so now we are in the process of creating our own local plan to have some of that state funding pay for some additional enrollment for SNAP benefits. So we'll start that conversation tomorrow. It's not like there's money out there and that we just pick a person and they hire a full-time person here, kind of like we had been told, but it's a little more in detail and in depth with contracting with our local human services department and Hunger Free Colorado and with the state. So we've got some examples from other counties to look at. And then we'll just kind of figure out what works best for us and then go for it. So anyway, that will be, that'll be happening in the next couple of months. I'd imagine it'll take us a little bit of time to get through that process. So, but just wanted to share that out.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I'll connect you with the Veteran Services Officer for any potential...
Sure.
Veteran transit that might be able to talk.
Sounds good.
Thank you for all that. I'll just mention tonight is the Lake County Conservation District annual dinner happening at CMC in the cafeteria. There'll be some great presenters. Adam Ducharme and Forest Service folks are coming to talk about the dispersed camping, the Friends of Lake County group being developed. We are awarded funding for a person to continue with that development. Team Rubicon, David Deitz is coming to chat. Brett Jordan with the Upper Arkansas River Restoration Program is coming to talk about the closeout of that project that's been going on over 20-plus years and talk about kind of the ongoing monitoring and talk about the plans that we have included through those natural resource and heritage funds that we were awarded with our other advocacy partners. Anybody is welcome and they'll do their annual survey also of the community. A lot of larger landowners are a part of the Conservation District, but anybody is welcome to be a member or join the meetings and conversations. And that's all I have. We've gone to public comments, not on the, on items, not on the agenda. You don't have any other public sitting in the room? Would you go back to Zoom real quick?
Sure.
And open that up? I'll ask any folks on Zoom if you have public comment for us today? Seeing any? So any public comment? Please raise your hand or unmute. I don't see anyone wishing to speak, so we'll go into our new business items. Janine McGee, our Human Services Director, is, has joined us online. And our first business item is the discussion and consideration of El Paso County transferring $140,000 of temporary assistance to needy families, or as we often refer to it as TANF dollars, to Lake County. And our approval of that. We had this discussion on Montero at our last meeting. Then Janine, let's bring an assist. Janine, is there anything else you want to tell us or just briefly kind of give a overview real quick again? I think you're muted.
Yeah, so...
We can hear you, sorry.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Last time, we talked about the $60,000 from Montero, and that will mitigate the overage that we will have from our TANF allocation spending. We are projected to overspend by about $56,000 from the allocation we have been given just in the normal course of business. And then the additional 140 was to do some of the other things that we discussed when we submitted our 2023 budget proposal. So it will be to fund items in our community that can be used for, that TANF funds can be used for. So I had sent the commissioners a budget proposing how we use that. One of the things I want to make sure that we do with this 140 is that we set aside $30,000 to replenish our reserves from the $30,000 we were able to give to Bright Start. We want to make sure that gets replenished so that we have our $100,000 in reserve going into our state fiscal year July 1, and then we can continue to support Bright Start the next year. And then other options to be considered in that budget is potentially some funding for St. George's with a TANF contract that would happen before July 1, paying for summer day camp for this summer, providing some funds to Rocky's Rock, which we have done in the past two years. Additionally, doing financial assistance in the community, looking at what our capacity is to handle those applications, but doing at least utility and potentially some rent assistance for the months of the remaining time in April, May, and June, to end by June 30. So that will be, now that we have these funds committed, we can start rolling out the application process for that and taking some applications. But we will be careful to not overstaff our, or put too many demands on our staffing capacity. So, and that's that. Yeah, so that's what the 140 will go to.
Excellent. Thanks, Janine.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any other questions or any questions?
No, I don't.
I don't?
No, I don't either.
All right. I will make a motion, sorry, just a second. That we approve the consideration of El Paso County transferring $140,000 temporary assistance for needy family or TANF dollars to Lake County and the approval of the TANF spending plan for state fiscal year '22, '23.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
None for me, thank you.
Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. And moving on, discussion, item number two, discussion and consideration for core services contract for TENSIN parenting class. Janine, do you want to give us a little?
Yep, so this is a new service that's being offered. We would like to contract with them with our core service dollars. So it requires that core service contract. And I'm pretty, I think Chris saw this one. I think we got that one all cleared up in the great process we have now of getting these all checked.
I reviewed it, I have a comment, asked for consistency, but no, go ahead, sorry, Janine.
Okay. Yeah, so we're excited to have these services just offered.
So my only comment would be, just for consistency, I'd like to be able to use our professional services agreement with this as the attached Exhibit A, if you will, so that the consistency we're using the same document, if you will, for each one. So I didn't have any issues with the terms proposed in their contract, but just for consistency, I'd like to continue that process.
Okay.
So just, Chris, I can follow up with you on that, too. So these core service contracts are sort of standardized by the state. So we could use ours, then, as a statement of work? Is that what you want to do or?
Yeah, just that our professional services agreement template, we could use that and attach this as the Exhibit A, which describes the scope of work.
Perfect.
It won't materially change anything, but just for consistency, our contract process.
Yep, I think that's a great idea. I'll start doing that. We'll be coming up with core service contracts here in July soon for the next round. So we'll do that.
Yeah, so I'll just, I'll follow up with you after this, once it's approved. And then we'll just send your contractor, the PSA, for it to be attached to.
Yeah, okay.
Great, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion for approval of a core service contract for TENSIN parenting class with the addition of our professional service agreement template.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
None for me, thank you.
Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Item number three, discussion and consideration of 100 Elk contract.
Yep, that's for summer camp this year. Chris and I worked on that. And this is paid for with TANF funds. They have slots for 28 kids. We prioritize our TANF served families who are either on our TANF caseload or are in child welfare services or are engaged with wraparound. And then, once we have those slots filled with those families, we expand it to the rest of the community. And we're excited to be able to offer that again this year. One of the things that's unique about this contract is they provide transportation, light breakfast and lunch, and then they also provide swimming lessons and assessments, which is something, I think, really helpful and important for our youth since we, they don't have access to that regularly in our community anymore, so.
Yeah, cool. That's great. Thanks for mentioning that, Janine.
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract with 100 Elk.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
None for me. I wonder, though, if we can just put with the motion, maybe that this will be paid for with TANF dollars? Do we need to put that anywhere specifically?
I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be, but you're certainly welcome to put that, include that. So it's, it's always been TANF funds that have been used to pay for it, but that's totally fine, however you want to.
You want to amend your motion?
Yeah, can I amend my motion, please, Tracy, to include the approval of the 100 Elk contract to be paid for through our TANF allocation?
Yeah.
Thanks.
I'll second that amended motion.
Thanks.
Any further discussion?
No, thank you so much.
None for me?
All right. All of those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All righty, and item number four, discussion and consideration of civil rights plan. Again, Janine?
Yeah, so this is a requirement by the Department of Healthcare and Policy and Financing that we have this in place. We have gone through the whole process. We followed the provided model that they offered. Chris helped work on this as well. And it serves as an opportunity to have Medicaid members make a formal grievance process or complaints when they feel that they have been discriminated against in the eligibility determination process. And there's an outline in there of where those complaints go to, what happens if there's a conflict of interest with the primary processor, and then, of course, what else is available to them as remedies further up the line, too. So this is compliance, and this is something that we'll be following in process as well.
Cool. Thanks, Janine. Any questions for Janine on civil rights plan regarding Medicaid?
No, none for me.
We'll entertain a motion.
Sure.
Do we accept the plan or are we acknowledging it?
Need to adopt.
Adopting? Sorry, lost my track here.
That's okay. I'll make a motion that we adopt the civil rights plan for the Department of Human Services to be in compliance with the Department of Healthcare Financing, Policy and Financing.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
None for me, thank you.
None for me?
Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Janine.
Thanks, Janine.
Yeah.
Item number five, we have discussion and consideration of Christie Galarza for the appointment to Lake County Public Library Board of Trustees. Anything to share with us here on this? This is pretty straightforward.
Yeah, no, it's straightforward. A former member, Mary Delph, rolled out the board. There are three applicants to the board, and the Board of Trustees did interviews with each applicant and then decided on Christie and wanted to appoint her. So that's the decision before you. I'm going to know Christie's on. Christie, do you have any comments?
No, just thank you for considering me for this position and happy to answer any questions you guys have.
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions either. I think it's a good appointment. I get a lot of book recommendations off Christie's social media, so I trust that she's very well-versed and very, very good for the job.
Great. I'll entertain the motion for the appointment of Christie Galarza to the Library Board of Trustees.
I'll second. Or I'm so moved, sorry.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
No, thank you.
All right, hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you, Christie.
Thanks, Christie.
Thank you.
All right, on to item number six. We have discussion and consideration of the county employee emergency hardship loan. I am not...
Ally's with us.
Ally is with us. Okay, we have our HR director online and then the county manager.
And county attorney.
And county attorney. So we did have...
Ally's coming, person?
Oh, okay.
She's walking up. She's coming right now, yeah.
Yay! So fast today. Oh, my gosh. I just ran back from something.
No, it was your phone.
All right. You want to give us a overview?
Sure.
Thank you.
Should we pull up the document first?
Did you email it to the...
In terms of the documents, in all honesty, I don't think they're quite ready for approval yet. I think there's some other considerations that need to go into this. So I'd love for us to have the discussion as to where we are in this process yet. But at this point, I don't know that I can recommend each of these documents.
Okay. Okay. What would you like me to do? Do you want me to pull them up, Chris, or?
I will, as I say, it just would be acknowledgement that they are just drafts. They're not the final versions, because they will need some revisions.
Will you email them here, Ally? I thought they were in the packet?
Yes, they are in the packet.
Are you emailing them, Tim?
And so while y'all are pulling those up, the one thing, when I started looking at this and vetting the action, number one, first thing I want to say, I think it's laudable and great that the county wants to offer this to employees, especially given some of the hardships that they're encountering right now with housing and stuff. In my research on this, though, my concern is how we manage to comply with the Colorado constitutional provisions that prohibit loans of any kind for any purpose. And so I think what we've done in the past is, and one of the documents that is proposed here or used here in the packet has our Employee Advance Agreement. And so an advance is not initially considered a loan, if you will, since it's against wages to be earned. So it's pretty much an advance on wages. If they default, then it becomes a loan that's collectible and such. And so I think in the past, the way we've gotten around the constitutional prohibition on loans is by using them as advances. I reached out to county attorneys. I'm aware that there are, I think, three that offer housing assistance programs and such. I've reached out to all of their county attorneys to ask how they vetted that and managed to confirm that it wasn't an issue under Colorado law. The only one I heard back from wasn't in place when it was adopted, and that's San Miguel County, which y'all might recall happens to be where former Commissioner Mike Bernamia is now county manager. And so she is looking for whatever legal opinion, whatever they got when they established their program. I understand that Eagle County, I've reached out to their attorney, too, has a program, and Summit County has a program. But I have not heard back from their attorneys yet to figure out how they approach that. One of the concerns I have, too, is that if you do any type of housing assistance loans, then in order to protect the resources you're loaning, you're going to need to have loan documents, including second deed to trust, promissory note, that kind of stuff, that will be recorded documents. And that's what San Miguel County uses for their housing assistance program. A concern that I have with that is that it could inadvertently impact the employee's ability to qualify for their mortgage, because it would be considered an additional financial obligation. And so we want to be careful about how that's offered and made available to them so that we don't inadvertently create issues. The other thing that was an overwhelming response is these tend to have pretty high default rates. And then you end up in a situation where you're a creditor that you have to collect on. And if you are doing housing purchase assistance where you've recorded a promissory note and second deed to trust, you have to go through the foreclosure process. More than likely, you're going to be second in line in terms of security for that, which means the county will be unlikely to recover. Because if they're going to default on the county, it's likely they're already defaulting on their mortgage as well. And so the first mortgage org, if you will, will have the priority lien on the property and stuff. And so there are a lot of potential pitfalls with this. And so I would just like to have additional opportunity. And I apologize that I wasn't aware of the work session last week when this was discussed so that I have the opportunity to chime in then. But I'd kind of like to have a little more time for us to fully vet it, to make sure that whatever we roll out, number one, will be legal under Colorado law. Number two, doesn't have unintended consequences for the employees or the county. And number three, doesn't end up being the opposite of what you intend. I know that part of this I expect is for retention of the employees, to make sure they can stay and get the resources and the housing they need. One of the county attorneys that read stats said they tried this type of program, and what they found was people were defaulting and leaving. So it wasn't, it had the adverse effect in terms of employee retention than it intended at the time. So I just think we just need a little bit more time to vet it and figure out what posture and status it needs to be in future that these issues are addressed.
What, so I think a lot of this, too, or maybe even, well, I don't know if we can really speculate whether a majority of this would be used for rentals and/or home buying, but there is, if it is used for rental down payments, first, last, does that change some of your concerns? And also, the housing authority has the down payment assistance in partnership. So maybe there's something we can come up with of like, you've exhausted X, Y, and Z opportunity and/or we won't give you a loan above a certain percentage of a loan you've already gotten with the housing authority for down payments?
And that, I think you need to look at outside resources, because one of them, I don't know if y'all consider, too, is if they participate in, and I think your 401 plans or something, there are loan options that they can borrow against the money that they contributed there as well. In terms of for rental assistance and such, as long as it's done as an advance on wages, I think you'd be fine with rental assistance. The challenge there in security deposits and stuff is, you know, what happens? You're going to be in that same situation. What happens if they leave, there was damage to the property, they leave before they repay the amount advanced, then the county's not going to get that money back. So it's just, it has to be something where you're prepared not to recover the monies advanced.
We're looking forward to advance this week, though.
Oh, yeah, I mean, the Employee Advance Agreement's been in place. And it's, when I vetted that previously, it was time because it's an advance on wages. So it doesn't technically, at the beginning, qualify as a loan. It's an advance on wages to be earned. Now, the agreement has a provision that if they leave the employment of the county, that it does, it is considered a loan and they are obligated to repay it, at which point I think the biggest issue would be whether you would enforce that or not or go after the money collections, at which point they would have the defense that it is an invalid loan under, in violation of Colorado law.
So could we adjust the proposed agreement to be an advance repayment agreement? Because we already have the one with the employee that signed, but put more firm policy in place with actual provisions of how much the advance repayment could be?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because we don't have a policy in the handbook right now that addresses advances. And I think if there was, I think maybe one of the older iterations, there was something in there about that, but it was decided not to, so as not to encourage employees to ask for the advances and such. But I think if you're going to broaden the scope, because in most instances, these advances have been for much lower amounts than what's proposed in the existing policy. And so I think if you're going to expand the cap on that, that you probably want to have a more robust policy in place.
Sure. I think we talked about $7,500 for the cap on this.
Yeah, and one of the things I'll say, that amount, the only concern I have with that amount is, you know, with this type of obligations, you want to make sure at some level that the employee, after they pay their taxes and obligations, like that they're still making minimum wage. And so that's a concern. And the second is how much time it takes. I know in the policy that's proposed to be 52 months, which is a really long period of time.
Pay periods?
Yeah, oh, I thought it was months.
Oh, no, or pay periods.
Okay, so if it's pay periods, okay, that makes me feel a little bit...
Yeah, two years.
Yeah, okay, good, yeah. It might be better to say, you know, in that period of time. The other thing, too, is one of the San Miguel County one, one thing I want to look at is if this is in fact to be a retention tool, to make it forgiven over a certain period of time potentially as well, if you do a loan program. So, for example, I think if, under their program, if they stay employed for 10 years, then it's considered forgiven. But again, we need to make sure that that's allowed in their Colorado law as well.
And we did, I mean, we talked a little bit about, we did, I mean, we touched, we actually didn't talk in depth about that. We touched on it, I think, and also talks about eligibility of having to be here or then what does that look like? For recruitment or just retention?
Yeah.
So we, yeah, and like paying back in a year or two years. And that would depend on how, what percentage of their pay actually is and...
Right.
Could we bring up the document and reframe it as an advance repayment policy today? Or is that something that we would want to look at further?
Well, as I say, the advance repayment agreement... Well, as I say, the advance repayment agreement, I thought, unless I'm mistaken, I thought this was.
The agreement that one year ago.
Okay, before.
But the policy itself.
Well, the policy part of it. I, I'm not a huge fan.
That's okay.
Of wordsmithing on the fly like that. But, um, I mean.
We can leave it then.
We could add it to tomorrow. That's already been posted for tomorrow though, so as we'll say.
But you have the, the advance agreement.
Right, yeah. Yeah, because I was going to say, without knowing the, how the, the loan, if there will be loans or that kind of stuff, how we handle. And also too, I may have kind of, kind of listed as one of the committee members, which I think is probably not appropriate because if they default, I'd be the one.
True, good point.
So, um, so my suggestion would be the county manager, HR manager and the, and then the board committee.
We had talked about blinding the applications. So I would want someone else to receive the application to blind for that and we would review.
So your HR specialist would receive the applications and do that, yeah. And I think that's a good and important point so that it, that will help mitigate the allegations that you're treating someone either preferentially or adversely, in virtue of who they are.
Yeah.
So I think, I think that's appropriate. I just, the, the one other thing I would suggest too, and, and this is something we need to look at, is, you know, if somebody needs, if they decide to go the housing assistance loan aspect, one of the things I want to look at is if we'd be entitled to get a credit report? Because that would inform your, how, how much risk the county's taking in making these payments. Because, you know, even if you keep it at $7,500, while that's not, not as much as taking on a full mortgage, it's still an amount that, you know, the county wouldn't want to, to lose a number of those.
Our agency that runs background checks, is able to do credit checks, they need to come to the HR office and inspect to make sure that we maintain confidentiality and then they would approve that. So we could get that approval process in place and just not run a credit report just so we have that in case we ever want to put a policy in.
Right, yeah.
That would be awesome.
Yeah, that, I, I just think that, that would be something you'd want to do. And you might even want to make it so that they do exhaust their other options, like that they have looked into whether they can, they can borrow from their 401 or from the housing authority or something like that and they don't have any other options.
Yep.
And it's kind of a last resort.
Yep.
Yeah, I just, I do like too that this is kind of that umbrella policy of like unexpected vehicle repairs, childcare emergency, you know, out of pocket medical expenses, those kinds of things.
And what level of proof are you going to expect for that? And how are you going to define emergency and unexpected and stuff like that? I mean, has, has any thought been given to that? Because I, of course, from my perspective, I look at it, if an issue arises in the future, how is this going to be attacked? And if I'm the borrower, I'm going to attack it to say, well, we didn't fully define what this meant and where that it was in contravention of Colorado law, so I'm not obligated to repay it.
Would that be up to the committee's discretion to decide? Is that part of what the committee's role in this is? Or, because obviously we cannot, every, every situation is going to be different. So my idea of this would be that the committee would be that definitive factor of, okay, yes, we've reviewed exactly what you're presenting. We have determined that this is an emergency or this is something that you are not able to repay. We've seen that you've exhausted all other options. Is that at the committee's discretion or should we have those defined beforehand?
I, I think you should have a list of what they're going to be required to provide as per the application process. And I think they, they need to be notified too that a credit check will be done for the loan. If y'all go down that route, because that's part of the, the, the patient refinancing laws requirements. So I think you'd want to, them to provide at least a statement with supporting documentation as to why they're applying. And what you'd want to do is redact if they provide things with their names or you get the credit report to redact names. But I highly recommend that everybody be treated the same. That there's not that much discretion as to what you ask them to provide. Because then you get into situations where, you know, if, you know, there's an issue, they get denied. They want to claim it was because of some discriminatory purpose. And then they say, you know, discovery, I want to see all the applications and what information you require to live with like yells. And it comes out that it wasn't that consistent in how the money was approached.
So, I mean, like, I don't know if the legislation has gone all the way through, but like your medical bills have the ability to affect your credit report. So if somebody came in with like, you know, hey, my mom just got into a really horrific car accident. She has a high deductible health plan I need to borrow, so I need to help her pay for medical bills. Like how, are we going to require a credit report for a medical expense?
I'm, I mean, like I said, it, if you, my suggestion is to be consistency and consistent what you require under this program period regardless of what the key purpose is.
And I imagine the committee would take that part of the consideration if that comes up on the report. Maybe, okay, we obviously don't know exactly what factor that would have, but I think we can take a reasonable guess of what impact that particular piece had on their score.
So this is Janine, I have a thought real quick. One of the things that my employees have actually brought up and asked about is if there's any kinds of budgeting workshops or options for employees to do some kind of like long-term financial planning, like short and long-term financial planning when it comes, especially when it comes to things like their salary and being able to prepare for these short-term emergencies, because it does come out as a big stressor for them. And so I wonder if there might be an opportunity to partner with like CSU or somebody who could. Often what we do in poverty reduction programs is we'll offer like a financial planning or financial assistance course or a budgeting class. And then coming out of that, that person has a sense of where they are and what their plan is and what assistance they need to accomplish the next goal. And then they're able to participate in different opportunities like IDA loans or, or microloans or things like that. So I'm not proposing those loans, but I'm thinking if maybe some type of budgeting process where somebody can meet with them and then there's like a process that folks have gone through to determine, here's all my resources available. Here's what I've exhausted and here's, and that can maybe help define what the emergency would be as well, just an idea.
Yeah, I think, I hate to say it, but I think I saw something from one of the nonprofits that they were offering something like that in the community.
No, it was true. It was through CSU extension, but that's a great point, Janine. I think Harvard can do that for county staff and we can even make it required on when CRA comes back out.
I wonder if Francis can even talk about the loan process this area too.
That'd be good, yeah. Because I, I, I appreciate that people can take funding out of their retirement, but I would, I would prefer for that to be their last resort.
Yeah, because there are some things that come with that, right? Like if you leave, you, you have to repay that right away.
Yeah.
If you, you know, if you leave, you have to report that as taxable income. Some of those kinds of things that I think people need to, need to know about too. Like if you take a loan out for a year and you need to refinance it, you still have the same term, right? So you can't take it out for a year and then take another one out for five years, like the term is the same. So the amount of money that really gets deducted from your check is going to only increase until that loan is paid off. So there are some, some things where like that might need to be a last resource, right? Like it may, my biggest concern is the people, like just helping people, right? Like if you have an unexpected medical expense with a high deductible health plan, you know, those, you're unexpectedly being forced to move out of your home. You know, like those types of situations that totally upend people's lives that like we have the ability to help with. But I would just argue for not making it so much more complex than it needs to be. I mean, yes, comply with laws and rules or whatever that we need to, but also like, I, I think when we talked about this last week, we were anticipating this not being used like on a weekly basis and having a cap on the dollar amount that we have available to loan. So I don't.
The other thing I. Own internal fundraising for emergency funds. It may not be the whole thing, but there may be amounts. But I've seen, I, when I worked for United Way, it wasn't uncommon for organizations to also have their internal fund where they would kind of fundraise to take care of each other. Like for that, it may not be that high of a dollar amount, but if there were opportunities to do something like that or even like a payroll deduction to contribute to something like that, it might end up being a, a nice, I don't know. And then maybe the county could match something, I don't know, just a thought.
Yeah, one, and I think, yeah, because I mean, it's the, the equivalent of an internal GoFundMe page, but one of the concerns with some of these loans and the reasons would be, you know, confidentiality, especially if it's for medical bills and, and that type of thing. And some employees might not want to go that route of having their colleagues know the difficulties they're going through.
But we are still working, it'll be, remember Ally's ready to present you on the sick, the sickly bank for folks to donate sick hours to that. So we can back those staff who have illnesses that way as well.
Okay, so the employee, employee advance agreement is in place, but we need to schedule another work session to talk through.
Hey, to, I would just appreciate the opportunity to, to further vet it and come back with a recommendation. And, and I can work with Ally to, as part of that recommendation revise the forms to reflect what the research shows and what our options are.
Okay.
And I know if there is a pressing need right now, my suggestion would be to allow that employee to use the advance agreement for that since that's already in place.
And would, I'm sorry, if you can just refresh my memory, with that advance, would that still be a payroll deduction back to the county over a period of, a period of?
Yes, that's how it reads.
Great.
I, I also just want to add that I appreciate the thought behind that too. I mean, all of our research we've been doing in our trauma-informed work culture have really shown that employers' ability to understand work stressors, work-life stressors are, is, you know, really makes a difference for them and is important in retention. So I just appreciate the thoughtfulness.
Yes, thanks for bringing this to us. Not make a date right now, you guys discuss and we can.
If this needs to be emergent, we can, we can get something on the calendar if you want to for the next work session. Is that next Tuesday?
We can come, I mean, we can come up with some, anytime, I think, that our calendars work, so.
Our emergent issue can be addressed with an advance.
Yeah.
But like we're going to see more of that coming up.
So having a policy to back up for the mess. Yeah, well. I think an advance repayment policy is probably more appropriate from the sounds of it than a loan policy. And then the housing piece would come separately from all of that, just to comply with provisions.
Yeah, I, I would highly recommend those be separated. I mean, things like, you know, it maybe, you know, especially for housing acquisition, like they're buying property. I really think you want that to be a totally separate thing than, than this. Just because you're going to have to go through some other processes.
And so keep them separate.
And that would be my suggestion. For, for any loans you want to provide to, for employees to acquire housing, to buy housing, I would suggest that other than the security deposits and loan assistance or whatever, I think can still be handled under the loan's policy. But in order to be a secured lender, if you will, for how, for purchasing a house, you'd have to get.
Okay, so that would be different, okay. That makes sense.
Right, we'll wait to hear when you are ready.
Sounds good.
For the next discussion, thank you.
Shane finally.
Will you, I did share the folder camera for the next one.
Sure.
Okay, I will do.
Which one, which one do you want? Or do you want the mouse to drive this?
I just sent over the documents that I was at last.
Sorry.
All right, item number seven, discussion and consideration of our intergovernmental agreement for the E911 Authority Board. And this will be led by our Emergency Management Director, County Manager, and Attorney. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped it. Nope, you're right, seven is not the IGA yet, but should we do the IGA before the, we should do the appointment. Okay, I misread. Seven is discussion and consideration for the appointments to the E911 Authority Board.
Sure, so. Can somebody just skip? So I know the BOCC has seen this before multiple times through, five or six different work sessions. So I'm going to, if I can, I know it changes your agenda a little bit, but I'm going to talk broadly about seven, eight, and nine. Just for a moment. So in terms of the discussion and consideration of appointments to the E911, well, okay, we'll just start.
Start from the top.
Right. So back in the late 1900s, Lake County and the city of Ludville. The city and the county entered into the original IGA in October of 1990. What that did was created the Lake County Emergency Telephone Service Authority. So that, I mean, back then was intended, you know, was intended to address Emergency Telephone Service Authority, which is otherwise known as Dispatch or our Emergency Communications Center. So then the original IGA was amended in July of 2018. And then today we are discussing, we'll be going over the, the amendments that we have worked on for the past, I guess it's been about a year. Okay. So anyway, the, those two smaller bullet points are the statutes that allow us to be able to do this. So when you look at your cell phone bill, you'll see that little, there's a, you know, a charge on there, government surcharge or government taxes or government fees, that's what this is. And then whoever has a cell phone in Lake County who resides here and pays their bill here, yes, the cell phone companies are watching, charge that and then it is remitted to Lake County to help offset costs for emergency communications. In terms of agenda item number seven, the discussion and consideration of appointments to the E911 Authority Board, what we have proposed, and we have worked with all of these individuals and all of these offices, would be proposing that the new E911 Board would consist of the Sheriff, the St. Vincent Health EMS Director, the Ludville Police Chief, Ludville Lake County Fire Rescue Chief, and the Office of Emergency Management Director. Why? Because these are the main agencies that use emergency communications in the community. Or you can think of it as another way, they cannot function without emergency communications or Dispatch. They cannot do their jobs without them. Sitting ex-officio on that board would be myself and the City Administrator. We've also added a provision in there that each of these executives, if you will, of their agent, of their agencies could propose having a delegate on the board or having someone who can sit in for them when the E911 Authority needs. Continuing down under the proposal, and we have asked that each of these executives of their agencies submit a letter to the Board of County Commissioners via the County Manager proposing their interest to be on the board. They do need to submit two names. So for example, if Sheriff Speckman nominates himself, he does need to nominate someone else. He does need to nominate someone else. Uh, Sheriff Speckman could, you know, if he did have an undersheriff. Uh, he could nominate, you know, the undersheriff or, you know, another, maybe a patrol deputy that has expertise in communications. Um, but it was more intended that the executives of these agencies participate on this board. Uh, so after seating this board, then the Emergency Communications Center would mer- would move under the purview of the E nine-one-one Board of Directors. Uh, this E nine-one-one Board of Directors would hire an executive director over that to oversee emergency, to oversee the Emergency Communications. Center. So that includes everything from staffing levels and training and ensuring that we have great, um, emergency communication officers. To ensuring that our equipment and technology are up to date and serving the community as best as possible. Uh, the IGA amendments also, um, I don't know if it expands the purview of the of the board. Um, but to determine the emergency telephone charge pursuant to state statute. There's a certain limit that they can go up to without having to go to the Public Utilities Commission or the PUC. Other than that, they will need to, um, go before the Public Utilities Commission at the state level to request an increase of the fees. So the proposal on the budget, so. The total budget for emergency communications and for E nine-one-one, um, is seven hundred and three thousand and seven hundred and eight, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. So current budget that we have in the sheriff's office right now is the salary, wages, and fringe benefits. Uh, for our emergency communication officers now. Does that include the director's salary?
Yes.
Okay, and that also includes the proposed new salary for the director of of E nine-one-one. Everything else there, um, you know, is our backup equipment, contracts, uh, operating supplies. Trainings for staff, that kind of stuff is a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Why is this important? Because we are proposing that the budget structure for this is, remember, the five key agencies that, um, pay into the, or that. Would sit on this board would be the five key agencies that pay into the E nine-one-one authority. You consider that giving them a little skin in the game. Elevating their seat as a board member so that they are spending their organization's funding on these emergency services. Um, so that we want the best emergency communications center that possible that we can have. This is also a best practice across the state. Uh, the sheriff Claire and I have done research and met with various. E nine-one-one or emergency communication centers across the state. I think the the biggest one is Jeffco, so if you take Jefferson County, uh, Jefferson County. Plus all of the municipalities, plus all of the special districts, plus all of their, you know, their PDs, their fire departments, all of that. Pay into this, um, and then have a separate entity that is their emergency communications. Uh, another part of, another rationale for this is just, to be frank, is to mitigate or avoid or address, um. You know, historic issues that we've had with various, uh, Leadville personalities on. Uh, dispatch incorrectly or not.
Community personalities.
Yes, yes.
Not to be misinterpreted.
Right, yes, yeah, yeah. Right, um, but so just to to try and, um, to mitigate that and set up an independent entity that, um. You know, takes this role seriously and wants to continue to do this and ensure that the services are provided, not only for their agencies, but of course to their community. Uh, so the budget structure is evaluating a three-year rolling average of dispatch call volume. Um, we can divide that by the lead agency, uh, by the total E nine-one-one budget, and then every every year, each agency. Funds a portion of their, funds their portion of it. Uh, so here is the total budget per count for you. Um. So if you need it, if you want to see the line items or things for that, um, that is where that ends. And then, uh, just a further breakdown of looking at what our communication officers, you know, uh. Rolled up salaries are supervisor director, um, all of those kind of things, so just where you can see where we are currently spending money. Uh, one provision of the IGA is an overhead cost transfer back to Lake County Government of twenty-five thousand dollars. That accounts for, um. The, uh, for Lake County Government providing human resources, IT support, finance support. Um, and other associated services provided by Lake County Government to the E nine-one-one board. Meaning that the E nine-one-one board does not need to hire or contract out their own HR or their own ITU or, or their own finance, uh, person.
I know, I wrote on this just a little bit. Um, so just to kind of talk about these numbers a little bit more, um, this, this, um. Budget is comprised of the current twenty-twenty-three approved budget for Dispatch, and then it also includes a budget specifically from the E nine-one-one funds. Uh, that was created by Mike Bahar and myself in a conversation with Doug Roy. Kind of looking at some of the things that Dispatch needs coming down the line and how the E nine-one-one fund money has been used historically. Um, so that's why kind of maybe some of the numbers look a little bit different or a little bit larger. Um, so for example, the confessional services line is listed at sixty-two thousand. Um, I believe it was at two thousand in that twenty-twenty-three Dispatch budget. And that sixty comes from contracts that have originally been taken out of the E nine-one-one fund. To include CenturyLink, Everbridge, Motorola, and that's kind of where those numbers come from. So this is kind of a one plus one equals two budget in some ways. Um, in terms of the training and education budget, I know that line item looks a little bit larger, um, at forty-nine thousand dollars. Um, historically, the E nine-one-one fund provided forty-five thousand dollars to Dispatch to kind of use as. Whether that's incentives, training, a six-position dispatcher funding, however they kind of wanted to use it to fill the needs that they were currently having. Um, in discussions with the sheriff, we put it in training and education to put some funds towards emergency medical dispatch EMD training. That is not currently the service our Dispatch offers, um, which is very unfortunate and something that I hope that E nine-one-one board works on very quickly. Um, especially in our rural locations. So that's kind of why that number looks a little bit bigger, um, just for reference.
I have a couple of questions. Can I help Ben, or do you want to wait?
Um, let me hear one more. Do you see your chart? Do you want me to go, I can go through the call volume or I can wait for your questions?
I I guess it's, I think it would be good to see here, one is, like, for the those positions, do they legally, do they have to get reposted? Because it's like they're working for a new entity now, or 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 people just, or is it a transfer since they're still gonna remain county and?
It'd be similar to what we've done with the housing director and the library staff, so an employee lending agreement.
Okay, okay, yeah, just wanted to, yeah, know if there was gonna be some.
That would, I would agree on.
No, no, I didn't want to say. I I I was worried, I was worried if we, I think, that would stress out everyone.
Yes.
Understandably, um.
Yeah.
Uh, and then the other, sorry for raising this question before, but like, on, are we assuming that the county is gonna continue to pay? For like office space, and I'm also just thinking like if we put Dispatch into a new justice center, if we actually head down that road. Is, how, how, how is the space cost?
That's a great question. I think for now, um, yes, um, Dispatch would, you know, would stay here. Um, and would be housed here, and so that would be, um, an associated cost with the county. Moving forward, if it does go into a new, uh, justice center space, I think that opens a. Um, a negotiation with the E nine-one-one board, the county to provide the space or increase the overhead cost allocation, those kind of things.
Yeah, I'm sorry for not reading that earlier.
No, you're you're fine, because I think that, you know, Claire and I and some other folks have talked about it, you know, in the past, like. We could put it somewhere else in the county, but does it make sense for it to be far from, um.
Yeah.
Law enforcement. Uh, and it's, you know, the current designs of the justice center have involved PD and SO in there, um, and OEM, um.
Right, right.
And there does need to be a discussion, um, about the space kind of in the forefront of that, um, as the equipment starts to age in the Dispatch Center. We will need to revise that. I'm sure you guys are all aware of the justice center planning. Um, so space will be a pretty hot topic.
That's great, because Chief Daly has a lot of space down at Sunfire Station, right, Dan?
I'm trying to do time still.
It might be.
Um, so anyway, uh, we talked about doing the three-year rolling average, so this is twenty nineteen through twenty-two, uh, call volumes. You can see where the total calls went, and then, you know, therefore their percentage of the use of the total calls. So, um. In the budget, what we have proposed, so sent, search, and rescue is under, statutorily is under the sheriff's office. We rolled that up into the sheriffs. Um, and we kind of cut things off there. Um. So, because I don't think we include, are we including Run Bridge?
No.
Yeah, so everybody else below SAR, we would not.
And State Patrol.
And, yeah, so, yeah, we're not, we would not be charging, so we wouldn't be charging Parks and Wildlife, Run Bridge. For service than the other, um, I'm sorry, yes. State Patrol, who is our, um, to pay into it. In the future, could they? Sure, but that would be a recommendation of the E nine-one-one.
Okay.
Board, um, to the county commissioners, because any, you know, changes in the budgeting would, um, have. Outside of, that needs to be approved by the BOCC.
So State Patrol right now is supposed not to be paying it just because it would take forever to negotiate that and?
Right, and if it is, I mean, so one percent of the.
Yeah, not based on, yeah, yeah.
If we're Jeffco, sure, because they do pay into it there, um, but they they have a much larger volume.
Yeah.
We just don't have the efficiency to do that. Um, so then looking at, uh, last year's call volume, twenty-one through twenty-two, um. And this is, uh. Is that the full year?
This is November, November.
Oh, right at the top, sorry, okay. Alright, and they, the way we have, they, there, there are two ways we can do that during time for whole things or just one way.
Are you talking about the JAP?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think he put those on his own.
Okay. Um, so what you're looking at here is kind of like, so the the total call, so this is who. This is who Dispatch dispatches out, so you could think of it as the lead agency. Um, so for forty-eight hundred calls, the sheriff's office was, uh. The lead agency that went out on this, um, because Chief Daly and Jeremiah Grantham have discussed that as well, because they, you know. Generally go out together, um, but who is, you know, dispatched first.
And Chief Cooper as well. I believe fire gets dispatched to Chief Cooper, obviously, if it's a medical affair, it's usually just the ambulance that goes up.
Okay. And then this is the proposal by the city administrator is to do it by district or geographic area. Um, so you will see where, um, looking through our CAD, um. The sheriff and Claire pulled and analyzed these numbers, so looking at total calls and then where your dispatch. So this is looking at, um. The city of Leadville districts, or district, if you will. For that same November to November time, right?
So that proposal would be the city of Leadville would take forty, fifty-seven percent of that. By in?
Yeah.
If you have, if you're an agency within the city, you have fifty percent, seven percent of that budget. According to these numbers, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was interpreting that correctly. Rather than identifying each individual agency as the lead.
Right.
Okay.
And there are, as you said, Claire, Sheriff, and I have done research on this, um. There are different ways to do this, I think, to stand up the E nine-one-one board. And to make the transition, um, out of the sheriff's office into this independent entity, this seems the most equitable, um. You know, in fair ways by reviewing by call volume. As E nine-one-one, as the board gets sat and they explore other models as well, they can come back to the BOCC and propose a different way to do their budget. So for example, in Jeffco, each agency has a rate that they pay for calls. Um, so one metro fire district's, uh, to be dispatched, their call might be forty-three dollars per call. Another area might be sixty-five dollars per call. That just, that that will just require deeper analysis by the E nine-one-one board and the director and the staff on that. But there are, there are other ways, um, that this could be done. Thank you. And then, and I just want to say, all of this, this, all of this started, um, after, um. When Sheriff Reyes resigned, um. Uh, Chief Edwards and I were having discusses, discussions on this of how to improve it, and this kind of snowballed into this, and when Sheriff Speckman was appointed and then elected, we. We drove the conversation further. Um, the sheriff is away at a conference right now, but, um, you know, the sheriff, you know, supports this. This is a a large part of his office that is leaving him, um, but it's, and everyone, you know, working with Chief Daly. Um, Chief Edwards, now Chief Chavez, and, uh, Sheriff Speckman and Claire and Jeremiah at the hospital, like. Makes sense to everyone. It is a best practice. Um, it it works and it works across the state, um, in large and small communities.
Okay.
Um, and I should have opened, I did this to Claire yesterday, um. I did put these on the agenda as discussion and consideration and and BOCC decision items. But I guess I I should have prefaced this, which is I I don't expect you to make decisions today, mainly because, um. I will be presenting this to the St. Vincent Board next Monday. Um, and then also presenting this to City Council tonight. Unfortunately, City Council will have a new attorney again tonight, so I don't. Anyway, I don't know, I don't know where where City Council will be or any any feedback that they will have or changes that they request to see from Mope and Sandy and all of those. Um, but I just wanted to get this in front of you guys in a more formal setting of that this is where we're going, and you will, you. Also, you guys are the ultimate decision-makers on this because it is your authority to appoint the board, um, so. Anyway, I should have started with that, so I apologize.
No, it's good. I I do like to see that this turns into a functioning board. Um, with some purpose, and so I really am looking forward to, uh. Making sure.
What was that, though, do we want? Do we, are you expecting us to make any decisions on seven, eight, or nine?
Um, I think on seven, you can, I think, like, Chris can correct me, I believe on seven, you could. Confirm that your appointments will be someone from the sheriff's office, the PD, the fire, EMS, and OEM. So if you want to do that, we don't have the names, um, yet.
Just the position.
But just the positions, if you want to, if you want to employ those, I can bring that to City Council, that the intention of the BOCC is is formal and that these will be the five agencies on the board. For aid, I don't, I think, um, I mean, you guys, you guys have seen it through so many various work sessions, I don't know that. If you have any feedback on the IGA, I guess you guys could go ahead and adopt the bylaws, um, Claire and I.
Well, and that, my only question was, I know that the city, um. Made some changes that will bother you all, and I was, I didn't have any issues with their request to check, but I want the job review and advice. As to whether it had an impact on, especially on your, your stuff.
Um, the city brought up that OEM was not written into there, which is a very good catch, um, so I did make some language to add OEM into there. Um, that was not purposeful, I promise, um, but I did send those out last night. I apologize for the delay, um, and the timing on those, but those are in your inboxes. Those are something that they sent to you. Um, and then I guess if you kind of want to review the changes I made based on their comments, I'm not quite sure who the city's attorney that's taking the lead on this right now is.
In in my suggestion would be probably not to bend the side on those documents today, just because we don't, they aren't finalized yet. Let's adjust, let's carry that, and Tim will probably get feedback tomorrow in City Council as well, so.
Okay.
But but I think as you said, I mean, we've seen this, you know, quite a lot through some detailed work sessions, so I think whatever the appropriate way to communicate, you know. That level of comfort or, you know, with with what's in here.
Could we make a motion that our intent, that we want to?
Is to prove that we will have a legal review.
Yeah, that we want to, like, one, create the board with the listed positions, and then, two, we want, we have the intent to proceed with. The IGA pending final legal review and partnership agreement.
I I I think that's fine, that I'm comfortable with that.
I think that's fine, or even for, I guess, for eight and nine, you could say. I, you could vote, and the the BOCC will be moving forward with these.
Yeah.
And, you know, um.
And are prepared to. And are prepared to approve, you know, once final legal review has been completed, something like that.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to suggest we don't necessarily approve pending the review, but just give a strong support.
The intent will be...
Motion that's, uh, go ahead.
Oh, I was, I was, sorry, I was gonna say, I like a, a motion to, like, direct to Tim and Chris to take this to the hospital board and to city council.
Yeah, and, and maybe even direct Tim and Chris and, and request that others that have been participating throughout this process, like the ambulance, you know, those organizations' leads are also an equal and have the responsibility to continue the communications with their respective boards to get this, to inform them and, and get this moving.
So essentially, take the current draft to the other two boards, to St. Vincent's and the city council?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
For their approval?
Yeah, and then we'll revisit based on feedback discussion, um, and, and would we, maybe we include in there too, like, a request on, I mean, they, we have all been giving feedback, so assuming that there is maybe limited feedback still, are we asking them to consider approval?
Yeah, I, I think for, I don't know, I don't want to speak for Tim, but I, one of the questions for me is that I thought we were done, and then all of a sudden, this last week, we ended up, it was a new city attorney that got involved and reviewed it, and had different changes than the prior city attorney who reviewed it. So it kind of, I thought we were ready to have it finished, and then some additional revisions we made.
Okay.
So can we make a motion that we, um, okay, you want to word that now, actually?
Let's say, let's say, um, um, the Board of County Commissioners is comfortable with, the, uh, drafts of documents and has participated in the work sessions thus far. We request that our city, or county manager, the city, uh, county attorney,
County attorney.
Do work with other, the other jurisdiction representatives to present to their respective boards for, with the intent to get decisions and feedback as soon as possible, so that we may make the final actions on the organizational documents.
Yeah, because we need what their approval first, yes. Okay, I'm good with that. Should I write that down and try it again? The board, the board is the board, um... You want me to take a stab at that? Well, we're gonna include all that. I will make a motion that we direct the county attorney and the county manager to take these documents to the other stakeholders with the message that the BOCC will make the final approval, once those jurisdictions have made their approvals. Guys, have I raised that pretty well? Okay, that's my motion.
I'll say it.
All right.
Any further discussion?
None for me.
None for me.
Thank you for continuing to work on this.
Yeah.
Thank you there for taking on this project.
Yes.
And I presume that Jeremiah and Chief Daley, maybe Chief Chavez, are the board? Fine.
It was a separate motion on, on, uh, separate, uh, reports.
Yeah, I was gonna do that, as soon as we vote on this, then I'll make a separate motion. All right.
Right, um, any further discussion?
No, thank you.
Great, all those in favor, aye.
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 Okay, and then, do we, do we, do we really have to do a consideration of the appointments? But I, I feel like we should appoint people, not the physicians, the physicians are named in the...
Yeah, the IGA. I was gonna say, if, if, that would be the only, I think, I don't think you need a motion for appointment this week, but if the message you wanted to convey is that these are the physicians that will be used for...
That we'll consider.
I, I thought the motion we just voted on sort of had, maybe we should have had, I mean, everything we just talked about in this question, so seven, eight and nine, as a bundle.
Right, I can convey that, right, it should not be a surprise to any of the directors of those agencies that, yeah, this is who we're thinking of, um, but it, it, again, it is up to St. Vincent and city council of, you know, at the end of the day, who they want, and it's up to he, at the end of the day, who, who he wants, so...
Okay, I suppose if you want a tournament, that you could, we could make a motion to approve the list of representative, or, um...
Do you want me to do that?
Well, I don't know that I, I need it, I mean, I think, I know, I don't know.
It's in the IGA, so please hold on.
That's your answer, so, okay.
Yeah, okay, so we're good.
All right.
Okay.
Just, I, um, would it be helpful to have any of us be at city council? I mean, is there gonna be, like, discussion that we'd be helpful at, or?
I don't know.
Claire, are you planning on attending that as well?
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
Tracy's here today.
So I thi, I think we should be good, and I think with, I mean, yeah, and I'm fine for city council, because I don't, you know, I, I know, I don't know how city councils pre, perform meetings on things, but, so whatever questions or things they have, I'm, I'm sure that Claire and I and Chris can answer those, and then also, you know, if they, if they want to see other things in the IGA or the bylaws, like, I'm amenable to those and bring them back to you guys, so, if you would like to come.
We appreciate the support.
Yeah.
But I think we're pretty familiar with these audiences, can make a good presentation.
For hell.
Great.
Thanks, Ray, whatever, do the dry run on you.
Cool.
Good.
Start a slide one.
Right, yes, okay.
All righty, um, okay, well, we have, we, uh, we'll circle back to item seven, eight and nine once we hear the feedback from partners, um, to make those appointments and final approval of the IGA as well as the bylaws.
Okay.
And we'll move on to number 10, uh, so a discussion of opportunities for the Leadville County Regional Housing Authority.
If I could just throw two things at you that I was looking for, for staff direction, um...
With previous, our previous agenda item or this one?
No, this one.
Okay.
If I could.
Yes, sure, go ahead.
Um, I would like direction or permission to go to the St. Vincent Board of Health Directors next Monday to present the land swap idea. And probably not in lieu of the full amount that they owe us, that they owe the county for the bailout, but a part of it, I would like, I would like to be able to go negotiate on the county's behalf. And then, the second thing I would like for you guys to discuss, or start to consider more, to direct your representatives to the Regional Housing Authority is on how to best utilize the DOLA grant. As we've dug in more into the parcels on West Fourth, it will require remediation and a lot of earthwork. That is not something we can get done within the DOLA, uh, grant timeline.
Okay.
West Eighth, we can move forward on, however, that is only 16 units.
East.
We, what?
East.
Or East, sorry, keep the, East Eighth, it's on both sides of the more, um, sorry. Um, on East Eighth, uh, we can move forward, however, we can only fit 16 units there. It is something that we can't really pencil, um, to bring it to, to any justifiable AMI. And then also the school district parcel, we can definitely bring, um, infrastructure out to there. However, at the last sanitation board meeting, when Director Wheelerhand went there, you know, the Chair Berger had a lot of concerns about that school district parcel and the drainage, the sewer drainage that happens there, those kind of things. I think that that parcel is still in play. However, what I'm going to, as the county does, own a prime parcel that can be used for housing, and that is the Harrison Ballfields. So if you could provide any direction to your representatives, um, on the Regional Housing Authority, to bring that to the Regional Housing Authority, so we can, like, fit things in within the DOLA timeline. So that, those are just two things I would request, when you, of course, may discuss whatever else you would like.
Um, I would be happy for you to go to the St. Vincent Hospital Board to present that proposal.
Okay.
And I think it makes sense, I know you had kind of shared with us the, all of the land in that area, but, um, seems like, maybe it's only, yeah, a portion of it, um...
Climax says, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, I just wonder, I just wonder what, um, I didn't go ahead and, like, look at guessing how many units would fit in that, so... Yeah, don't know how far you're gonna get there.
And that seems like a good way to back out how much and where to start the discussion is, like, I, I, again, I think I had in my head that sort of like 30 units is like really the minimum to begin to, like, as you said, pencil out for affordable housing, so at least start with a lot, or...
Oh, the key word.
Lot, or lots of, portion of lots, that maybe does have enough space to at least do, like, you know, another 14, 16, 19, minimum, just so we don't end up in the same situation again.
Is that, I'm sorry?
Well, no, and I, I, I also can't remember the hospital sites and how big or small they are.
It's on the left.
Um...
Where, what?
Third down.
Oh.
Um, yes, these are good points.
So the climax site hasn't had any movement on it?
Well, it doesn't even matter, because the amount...
It, you know, it, it's on earth, so it's pushed everything back.
And, uh, now, if we talk about the, um, DOLA grant, it was like for the 1.5-ish, and they asked us to apply for one, and the whole assessment of the climax is 7.6 plus million for infrastructure, so, um... Just not in the current, like, context of what we're, the funds we're working with.
So my proposal for the land swap would be this parcel, this parcel, this parcel and this parcel. There is an easement on, this is 25, uh, there's an easement on, I believe, this one? Or was it, but did you think it was just this alleyway there?
I think it's the one that goes east-west, alleyway.
Oh, this?
No, above, that goes past, yeah.
Oh, this, yeah, okay. So there, so there is an easement there, there's that, and I was also thinking more and more about it. There's this that they don't really use, which is this chunk of their parking lot. Anyway, uh, there's, there's some opportunities, I will, I will, of course, report back and let you know how the, um, discussion goes.
I do like those parcels, like, on, off of Sixth Street and off that parking lot, behind the hospital.
Yeah.
Um, it's not favorable, I don't think.
I also would suggest we, um, maybe ask you to chat with School District Administration on Harrison, shifting to Harrison Avenue.
Sure.
Because I, that's probably the most physically condensed infrastructure, maybe really a lot of it already there, and our funds could go potentially, in theory, towards tap fees and actually get closer to, um, you know, help, help us with gap funding.
When you say, discuss.
Discuss, or just drop, yeah, give them, give them, ask them to share with their board potential, because they own that piece on the left, you know, oh, that's like, first, like, way, it's just long, that one.
Oh, this one, yeah, yeah, okay.
Um...
Is that where they would build a new portion of West Park?
No, I think it's here, is where they would build it, yeah.
I...
But, but, but the long-term plan, i- if they vacated the current LCIS site, the school district at least, as of two years ago, would want some amount of land on the other side of the driveway so that they have a piece of land in the county they can build another building on.
Okay.
And we need to...
Still, please.
Without Ballfield, no, that, maybe even...
Yeah, I just, I don't want to, like, jump into that, because, like, one, we don't have enough space to have rec programming anyway. You know, like, community field, you've got 46-year-olds trying to play soccer, a high school team trying to practice, a middle school team trying to practice, all at the same time. And so, like, we're, we're running, we're running short on space anyway, um, without, like, cutting out a whole bunch of programming, which I think is not beneficial to anyone if you don't have any programming, like, I wouldn't want to live somewhere where my kids couldn't, couldn't have any programming. So I, I just need to be cognizant of that. I, but the site, I mean, really is the most ready available site for, um, housing. The only other site that I think would be considerable is Skyline Field, which is right next to the Mount Mason Manor. If you could get rid of one field quickly, that would be the one I think you could get rid of the quickest.
I'm not getting into that.
They're using it for T-ball, and really, you could move T-ball to Harrison Field or Bakersfield. Like, you could schedule those games to be accommodated at Bakersfield.
I wonder if we, I mean, again, I mean, there, we are, I don't think we're making any decisions.
No, no.
I would be interested in the field, the school districts, and then maybe that top northwest corner, um...
Okay.
Nope, this whole area, yep, that area.
Yeah.
Um, north of what is platted, or what's included in the plat, like, north of the storage, where the storage areas.
Yeah, all the tree area.
Basically, and not, not touching the baseball field, and I also am now thinking just out loud, because we know that there's significant infrastructure around this area, I mean, we could maybe structure work on better drainage throughout the area that runs, leads into this area and then out through West Park. It'd give us a really good regional shortage of infrastructure improvement, I guess.
On the, yeah. Yeah, I mean, like, if you were looking at, like, we have to choose a site tomorrow to put some housing on, I would advocate strongly for Skyline Field, just because I think it's, will be stabilized location. And really, if we, if you wanted to increase any kind of programming, you could rehabilitate Harrison Field because of the space, but you can't really rehabilitate Skyline Field, because it's not big enough, right? It's not big enough to accommodate anything other than T-ball. Where you could move T-ball to a bigger field, you just can't move, like, the majors or the minors to a smaller field, right? But that's just an option that I think is out there too, if we want to explore that. The rec department may feel differently, I don't know, I'm making assumptions.
And, I mean, there's like a list of things to get into, but that long strip that we talked about, I'm not forgetting, or I, I don't know what the school district is currently thinking, I mean, I know we sort of hopped on that just so someone else didn't buy it.
The school district did?
And I, we, I mean, one of them, the school board, we hopped on it, because we just didn't want someone else to buy it and start doing something weird and start approaching, or like, try to stick a road up there or something.
Okay.
Um, but I don't know if they are just sort of holding that, or if, if, I mean, if you could add a couple of the other... These parcels might make it big enough for housing, and, and to your point, Sarah, like this sort of tree triangle might, you might be able to get enough space in there that's not forcing decisions on the playing field dominoes to fall.
What are, what are other parcels that you've identified that maybe might have some access to infrastructure?
That's, there's, these are your guys' best
Okay.
places to build.
Okay.
With the original intent, when we were doing the DOLA grant with West Fourth and West Eighth and the school district parcels, it's like, I mean, these are info as well, but like, very much info, boom, we can bring the infrastructure out, which will also benefit future development within those areas in the city, refurbishment of some of the, you know, aging infrastructure, that kind of stuff, but the amount of work, especially in West Fourth, is a lot, the, the phase one isn't even done on yet. So we're gonna do the phase one, and then the phase two, and then remediation, and then figure out all of the.
The Penrose East Fourth or the third, the school district?
The East Fourth.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
West Fourth.
Just wanna mention, oh, East Fourth?
East, I knew, shit, sorry, I don't, sorry, East Fourth.
That's really a cover.
Yeah.
And it wasn't de-listed yet, I know, sorry.
Yeah.
No, it's okay, and so the EPA has like confirmed all that.
Yep, and Jackie's been working closely with them. And they're, they're more than happy to do all of these things, but their timeline starts in October. You need to have RFPs out the door by next month.
Okay, so there's really not any way for that to align with the DOLA money?
But, you know, for a future project, you know, like, we can do that, and the EPA covers the cost for, for all of that, so, and we can go through those.
So really, we could start that process in October, and then you can recover that.
Yeah, so Jackie's working down that process.
Because then that could be like a phase two of shovel-ready project, potential shovel-ready, like where we could put infrastructure in once we get that remediation done.
Right, but remediation has to be done, we can't do, we can't do the infrastructure without remediation.
Okay.
Without, maybe we could do that, but that also wasn't allowed, because, so.
Okay, cool.
Do we know what remediation has been done or might remain on Harrison? I mean, I'm assuming, I was like happily assuming that it, it's mostly been done since in the middle of residential, when we were playing baseball there, but from conversations I've had with Ann about it, like, it is, that is, go get your shovel, like, let's go. It is ready.
And, and, you know, the reason, one of the reasons we did not initially propose Harrison in the DOLA grant was working with the school district on them trying to figure out what their future plans are, so I'm happy to go back to administration and say like, what, how, how much, but where are you at, where, where the plans are at?
Please download the board, their board, as soon as possible. Yeah.
Me?
No, ask them to, yes.
Okay.
Hey, look, to your point about like where a full-size baseball field could go, I mean, I was, my brain was trying to remember like that old, old rec master plan that had like more stuff going down below, like adjacent to the community down there, and I'm just wondering if, like, I'm just imagining, like, a baseball field has lower infrastructure needs than housing, and I would imagine it would be easier than housing here and put a baseball field.
Somewhere else?
Adjacent to community field, even that required a lot of earthwork, it might not require much infrastructure.
See, there had been this, this conversation about like not having access to water and sewer down there, but there is access to water and sewer somewhere there, because they have bathrooms.
Yeah.
I think that there's a sewer line that goes down thirty, County Road thirty-six, right?
It goes through, it goes to the east of the community field, between the bathrooms and the community field.
So I don't, I don't know if that was just like, back when the community field was coming into fruition, like that infrastructure may not have existed, or may not have been useful at that point, but it may be useful now, today, or maybe has been added after the fact. But yeah, I don't think that that's a bad idea either, because I think in that master plan, like the consolidation of recreation services was in that area, like a recreation complex.
Yeah.
Which makes a lot of sense to me, that like, you could theoretically plan to have like a rec center in a field and a community field or wherever, all in that area and in that space. That made a whole lot of sense to me, it's just never been like, pushed further down the road than like, this is a concept.
We might have a work session.
Sure.
Very quickly.
Sure, coming.
Sure, sure, sure.
On that too.
So, thank you, so I will go to St. Vincent next Monday and present this. I will reach out to the superintendent.
Okay.
And inquire about that. Then are you okay with Sarah and I going and presenting? This is the VOCC's intent or direction for.
Plan B.
Plan B, yeah, because we have, like, we, we have to get the RFPs out in May, which is, we're, it's already too late, but anyway.
The drainage on the third street school district site that they've already promised to the project is here, so the, you can take that box away. This is a north-south drainage or ditch, I believe, nothing that runs through here, FYI.
Oh, okay, yes.
Okay, you know.
I'm good.
Okay.
Sanitation chair, good question.
Okay, I didn't know if they pointed that, it out, or explained how it
Probably not.
lays out, but it's, it's not like it's like going through the property.
Right.
Where it's like something.
Yeah.
That has to be.
Yeah. So I, I, I agree with you, I think this one is still in play, will it be birthwork and other considerations? Yeah. But that can be, that can be site-ready, because I also, Blue and I walked over here, because there's a trail right there.
Yeah, okay.
We've done it many times.
Yeah, I think that silver, like that silver dot is a culvert that sticks out, right, yeah, right there, up, right?
On the other side.
In the, in the, yeah, right there.
Oh. I think that's.
Well, there's a culvert that sticks out somewhere.
There is a culvert there, yeah. Okay.
Maybe we can pave Panther Ray way for the school district too.
That is rough, that, this probably would get a little wild. Okay.
All right, well, I'll entertain a motion to authorize county manager to discuss and negotiate with St. Vincent Hospital Board, as well as our representatives to the RHA to inform and present the Plan B for the DOLA project. So moved. Any further discussion?
None, thank you.
Great, hearing none, all of those in favor, aye.
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 Oh, my gosh, I triggered the mic cord.
All right, and last, new business agenda item, discussion consideration of the mutual aid agreement with the City of Ludville Police Department and the Sheriff's Office.
Finally.
Finally?
Is Heath supposed to be on?
No, Heath is at a conference, he was gonna try and make it, it just didn't work out, but, so when this was presented to City Council, they recommended that a mediation clause be put in, and there was, you know, Heath agreed with that, so the mediation clause, it's in your packet, it's something to the effect that the parties will seek out mediation and let's let the costs equal it.
Yeah, and that's typical for mediation provisions that each party.
Okay.
To space, I didn't have any issue with the language that they recommended.
Great. And are they, last time we talked about this, they, we are, sorry, they're actively covering, and this doesn't, this is just like formalizing
This is, yes.
Current leadership, et cetera.
Yeah, yeah, it's not, it, it's not, it's pointed, it's more of, okay, this is what we're doing, and we'll collect information to see if there's any re reimbursements of, if ones up one side of the others, or more response. But that will be till the end of the year, we'll go this year, and then at the end of the year, collect the data and decide if there needs to be some sort of reimbursement mechanism.
Okay, thank you for that reminder, great. Any other questions for staff before we?
None for me?
Take action?
No.
Okay. Any more? Make a motion?
Yeah, I will make a motion that, can you just, sorry, that we approve the mutual aid agreement with the City of Ludville, Ludville Police Department and the Sheriff's Office.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
None for me, thank you.
All right, hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
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 Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And then our consent agenda for reports, minutes, bills, and payroll. I have no comments on the minutes you sent us, Tracy, from March seventh or March twenty-first.
Same, I did not either.
Yeah.
And then I saw the correction to the minutes on the seventh, so I'm giving that. Thank you. So I will make a motion that we approve the minutes for March seventh and March twenty-first.
Our consent.
You were just approving the consent.
Consent agenda.
I'm sorry. All right.
I second that we approve the consent.
There we go, any motion, please?
Any further discussion?
No, thank you.
Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, we'll make sure that you have the dates and things on there.
Okay.
Before the consent agenda, but, yeah.
That's a new one? Thank you, that's great.
Oh, well, there are dates for the bills and payroll?
There were, and that was, I, I made it for the previous month, but they.
That'll work.
This is like, while you're looking at that, I meant to mention at the beginning of the meeting, but we're working on new formatting, continuing to improve that as it translates from the format to being published on the website, because the website does not necessarily, what's the word? Is digest or?
Ingest.
Ingest the, it's not ingest the the original format necessarily, so we will, we will continue to improve on that. It was the planner that was throwing people off.
I didn't think it was that bad, I couldn't. I've got mixed reviews, it looks better on paper, and then, it's funny, you can't edit the CSS in this site, which is making me twitch.
What's the CSS?
That's the cascading style sheet, it's how you do colors and fonts and lines in HTML.
Wow.
I think it looks a lot better.
Yeah.
Maybe Cyber did not reach out to me, so.
Okay, that's good.
Might just take some getting used to.
Cool.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are through our agenda, we will adjourn at twelve forty-five.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.